Good evening, everyone. Welcome and Happy New Year to all. My name is Jorge Cruz. I'm the Board Secretary for the Verona Board of Education. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting. It's now 7:03 PM. And we'll get started with our Pledge of Allegiance. Please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm gonna get started with reading to you the election results from our November Board of Education election. First off, we have Mrs. Pamela Prisco with 3,357 votes, followed by Mr. Christopher Walker with 2,730 votes, and Mr. Ron Mueller with 1,994 votes. With that, we want to welcome Mr. Walker and also Mrs. Pam Prisco for this year in our reorganization meeting. I'm gonna get started with swearing of the board members. So, Mr. Walker, if you could take a stand on by the podium, I'll meet you down there and we'll do the swearing in.
I, Chris Walker, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Chris Walker, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualification prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education and that I do not disqualify as a voter. Pursuant to RS 149-1 nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or a offense. Listed in NJ S. 18A. 12-1. Then I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all duties of that office. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you very much. I just want to thank my mom and my dad for making me and being amazing parents and always filling us with love. Maureen and Charlie, you're the reason that we do everything. And Lenny, Mr. Assistant Superintendent of Essex County and Preholder Luciano, it means a lot to be for you to come out tonight as well as some people from Haildon as well. And I just want to read a quote real quick that is from a book and it's the reason that I wanted to get into the education and it's from "The Catcher in the Rye," and one character is describing a situation to another and he says, "Anyway, I keep picturing all these little kids playing some game in this big field of rye at all. Thousands of kids and nobody's around, nobody big, I mean, except me. And I'm standing on the edge of some crazy cliff. What I have to do is I have to catch everybody. If they start to go over the cliff, I mean, they're running and they don't look where they're going. And I have to come out of somewhere and catch them and that's all I do all day. I just be the catcher in the rye at all. It's crazy, but it's the only thing I'd really like to do. I know it's crazy. And as educators, we're here to catch the kids that are falling and bring them back to the rye. Thank you."
Pam Prisco. So at this time, we're gonna swear in Mrs. Pam Prisco.
Hi, Pamela Prisco. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and I will bear food. I was doing good, sorry. True faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments of the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people, so help me God. Hi, Pamela Prisco. Do solemnly swear. That I possess the qualities provided by law. For office of member of the Board of Education. And I am not disqualified as a voter. Pursuant to RS 194-1. Nor disqualified for conviction of the offense. Listed in NJ S. 18A. 12-1. And that I will faithfully impartially and justly. Perform all duties of that office. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you.
Again, once again, congratulations to you both, Mr. Walker and Mrs. Prisco. And welcome. At this time, I'm gonna start by continuing the agenda with the reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorg meeting held on January 4, 2022. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Time, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VA. Posting of this meeting is setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted on the Verona Board of Education Office and the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolution have been made available to the public and press. So at this time, I'm gonna continue with the roll call. Mrs. Freshy? Mr. Day?
Yeah.
Mrs. Joppy?
Here.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. Thank you. Next, we're gonna continue with the election of our Board President for 2022. I need the nomination.
I nominate Lisa Freski.
Okay, and I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so motion from Mrs. Prisco and second by Mr. Day. And right now, we're gonna do a roll call to vote for Mrs. Freski as Board President. Mrs. Freski? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Joppy?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
No.
We have quorum motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we need a nomination to elect a Board Vice President.
I nominate Mrs. Prisco for Vice President.
Mr. Day nominated Mrs. Prisco and we don't need a motion. Are there any further nominations? No? Then we can do a roll call to vote on Mrs. Prisco for Vice President.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Joppy?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Excellent. We have a quorum. Thank you very much. And we're gonna continue with the agenda and we're gonna move on to the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Fernari.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate Mrs. Prisco and Mr. Walker on their successful election to the Board of Education and to congratulate Mrs. Freski and Mrs. Prisco on their election as the Officers, President and Vice President. The role of the board member is important to the well-being of the district. These volunteer positions can be challenging as well as deeply rewarding. As your interim superintendent, I can say that the board superintendent relationship is critical to our attainment of our goals now and into the future. Thank you all around this table for your dedication. I'd like to remind our school community that I will be sending out an update on our return to full days of instruction by the afternoon of January 6, 2022. As of today, January 4, there were 170 positive cases of COVID-19 reported by individuals who were not in school during the contagious period. Another four cases were reported by individuals who were in school during a contagious period. There are also 71 individuals currently in quarantine. This information and a breakdown by school is located on the district website under COVID-19 Updates, the COVID Dashboard. I've received and replied to questions from our school community members regarding the reasons for an abbreviated day schedule this week. The primary reason was the reporting of exposure to COVID-19 positive individuals or of positive test results during the holiday break, which was not readily available to us before school started. In addition to that, the consideration that we needed to be very mindful of the opportunities that we have during the school day where wearing a well-fitting face mask is not possible, such as lunchtime. Now that we have more information, which has come in over the last couple of days, we have been able to make additional plans and we're very, very hopeful that next week we'll see us back to normal with COVID restrictions in place, however. Our school nurses have been working very hard to gather and analyze data, conduct contact tracing, and in addition to tending the needs of our students and staff while they're in school. I want to publicly thank our nurses and Mr. Merkler, who serves as our COVID-19 coordinator for their hard work regarding the health emergency. Our administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, and all of our staff members are constantly adjusting plans based on available space, available staffing, and other elements of our approved school reopening plan that was created for the start of the school year. It should be noted that the designation of a very high transmission rate in our area is also taken into consideration. As I said, we're still very optimistic that next week we'll find us able to return to full days of instruction. I understand how difficult these changes and plans are for our families. Please know that we're doing everything that we can to ensure that our students have what they need academically, socially, and emotionally to the greatest extent possible under these trying times. And just as another, I'm gonna say it one more time. Look for my reminder and update on January 6 in the afternoon. Another area that we have been diligently working on, as you know, at our last meeting, I was able to make a presentation for our diversity, equity, and inclusion work that we are engaged in. One of the things that was part of that presentation was that the district was going to create a request for proposal to solicit the services of one or more consultants that will work with us through the project. Thanks to Dr. Miller and the other members of the DEI or Diversity Equity and Inclusion Facilitators Group. That request for proposal was created and is posted on our district website and it was widely distributed. I also was able to have a conversation, if you recall in the presentation, I mentioned that the district was going to be working with the New Jersey Consortium for Excellence and Equity Northeast with UPenn and the New Jersey School Administrators Association. I've had the conversation with Dr. Jarvis from the UPenn School of Graduate Education and he is also sharing our RFP with his contacts in the area. He has many great resources in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion, so we're very we're looking forward to a deep pool of consultants that will be able to vet. And I just want again to shout out to Dr. Miller and to the team for getting that RFP out in a timely manner. We've also sent a letter out to the individuals who were on our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee that I mentioned in the presentation. That those committees actually are comprised of community members and staff members and administrators and parents and so and we also want to make sure that we are very representative on those committees, but we sent a letter out to that group to let them know just what our plan is for upcoming activities. If there's anyone out there listening who is still interested in becoming part of one of those committees, please reach out to Dr. Miller. He is working on making sure that our committee members who were engaged prior to this year, if they would like to remain engaged, we welcome you. If you can't join us, tell a friend because we want to make sure that those committees thrive. That's about all I have for my report this evening.
And thank you, Dr. Fernari. Does anybody have any comments or questions in regard to?
I was a Dr. Fernari. I want to start by thanking you for keeping the schools open. I know it's not easy to do, but thank you for doing that. And thank you for also keeping the rec sports alive. I think that's really, really important to the kids in our town, so I thank you for that as well. I also want to thank you and your administrative team and the teachers and nurses and everyone else because I looked at the state dashboard, state COVID dashboard a couple of days ago and Essex County's got over 130,000 students and we've seen 86 or so reported cases of in-school transmission, so Verona and all the other schools in our county, it's over a 99.96% efficiency rate stopping the virus from spreading within the building and that doesn't happen by accident. You know, that happens because of careful planning. The teachers doing their part, the parents doing their part, and most importantly, the kids, you know, buying in, so thank you for keeping our schools safe and being open during pandemic.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions in regard to Dr. Fernari?
Yeah, I just want to speak to the RFP for the consultant for DEI, so have we received any applications thus far?
So we've received several inquiries. I don't know the number, but I've seen at least six. It's five? Okay, I miscounted. Well, that's right, because one was the RFP group, right? But the deadline is the 21st of January, so those that have reached out to us will be submitting and I'm sure there are some others out there that just didn't reach out, but.
Okay, if we don't receive any applications by the 21st, what's the plan after that? Do we just extend the deadline? Okay. So just to confirm, because I believe there's a lot of misinformation out there, we have not spent any money on a consultant yet.
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions for Dr. Fernari, we're gonna continue on with the regular agenda. There are no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to committee reports. And first, we have athletics.
Thank you, Mrs. Freshy. I'll take that. So we met back on December 22 and winter sports is up and running. There have been some cancellations due to unfortunately COVID, but as of now, things are running and sometimes there's some cancellations that are last minute, but I was at the basketball game, the boys' basketball game against Bloomfield before our meeting. It's nice to see just everybody be normal, even with the mask on. It was just good to see. The mask-wearing in the sporting events has been in control. The students have been wearing them, parents, so there hasn't been any issues with that, so that's a good thing. And the busing situation is still ongoing. We have Bel Air drivers that have been amazing helping us out and just an issue all around. And other than that, I think this is for, Dr. Fernari touched about the COVID and Field Trip is just the discussion, is on discussion item, is a discussion right now because of COVID, if that's gonna take place in February, they were going to the Model UN. So that's just still up in the air right now. And that's all I have to report.
Mrs. Prisco, in regard to the Field Trip, if it doesn't take place, will the Model UN competition take place virtually or did they discuss that at all?
No, so we have our staff reaching out to those that run the Model UN because we need to know what their COVID protocols are and to know what the plan is in the event that the the actual live event isn't able to run.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments in regards to athletics?
I have a question regarding busing. I know a few meetings ago, I had reported out that the state was in talks regarding the bus drivers' application process to remove like the mechanical engineering piece of it. Was there any talk of that? Is there anything else from the state regarding that? Okay. Thanks. Nothing discussed about that? No?
Sorry.
I just want to add a real quick thing that I forgot to mention was this year, there was no one signed up for winter cheer, so there was no winter cheer for the winter, so just so I forgot to mention.
Thank you very much. And then we had Community Resources Meet. Mr. Day?
Yes, we did. A couple of things real quick to run through. Update on the Superintendent's search continues to move forward. As you know, we hired HYA, the recruiting firm to work with us. They've done stakeholder forums, they've done the data gathering analysis, posted advertisements with the opportunity to work as a superintendent in Verona. One of the last things they were able to do was meet with the elementary teachers, get some feedback from them. And then on January 20, we have a meeting now set to talk about the pool of applicants that have come in and they're gonna have this HYA is gonna be meeting with the board to talk about those applicants, so we're very excited to find out who's applied and get that information to us. One of the next items we talked about was some of the things we're doing with the Friday folder. A couple of issues have been out since November's meeting, so we're continuing to do the Friday folder. We discussed a little bit how to reformat it, but we're still excited to continue having that Friday folder. And we did talk about the roles and responsibilities presentation that we're gonna look to add into our website by having that in the website. It will spell out for the public and for the community what the roles and responsibilities are for the board and the board members. We're also working to update the district Twitter feed, so I'm very excited about that. We're working on that. We're working on that. Yeah. And then we also added community tabs and links to the main page of the district website, so I think we talked about how the website's been improved. There was some information that was missing. We're looking to try to fill in all those gaps, so any feedback that we get from some folks and, you know, from the administration, we want to continue to improve our website and make sure it has all the active information. And regarding the superintendent, Mrs. Fernari's been doing a wonderful job and Mr. Walker had probably given accolades already today too, but she's been a great job of just getting involved with the town and the community. She had a chance to meet with Mr. Malinari, Mr. Zender of the Public Works in November. She also met with Mayor Roman on the 29th of November. Met with Mr. Cunningham of the Recreation Department, met with Deputy Mayor McGrath and Councilman Holland and Mr. Cavallo of the town. I'm also met with the Police Department, so I know you've been very busy running around trying to meet everyone in the community and spread the word about you know, what we're doing, how we're working together with the town, with the different aspects of the community. I know one of the other things, I provide you a name of a Realtor. I know you want to meet with some of the Realtors in town and talk about, you know, how we can help them promote the town when they talk about houses or properties in our community, how you can help them promote Verona, the district, the schools, and what we can do for the people that move into this district. That's about all I had. So anything else, Mrs. Freski, to add?
The only thing I'm gonna add is in regard to the Superintendent's search, we are having a special meeting Thursday, January 20 at 6:00 PM. It'll be held in the Learning Commons and we are going to open the meeting as a public meeting and then close and go into executive session to follow up with the HYA. They're going to start to present us the pool of candidates. So that meeting should last about, they said, two and a half to three hours. So I do want the public to know that that meeting is on January 20 and then coming out of there, it'll be our job to evaluate that pool of candidates and keep whittling down. So the actual closing of accepting applicants is this Friday, the 7th. So they're still accepting applications up until that date and I think they have in excess of 35 applicants at this point. So we should have a healthy pool to choose from.
Just to add to that, that that meeting is an executive session and that's because we have to preserve the confidentiality of the candidates because some of them may have not communicated with their own employers yet. And if we make it a public meeting, then it's kind of blown them up, so that was just in an effort to preserve the confidentiality of all of the candidates that we're gonna be discussing.
Does anybody else have any comments on community resources? Mr. Walker?
No, but I do have a comment on a topic that we don't have a committee yet for. It's the co-curricular 10-1. Whenever I see something on an agenda that I've never seen before, it's obviously exciting. I see that we have a tabletop game design. It's on the agenda to be approved, so you know, Mr. Miller had asked about that. If you could kind of let us know what this cool program is, because I think it'd be cool to promote something very unique like this.
Sure. Yes, this is a club that presently exists in our middle school. Mr. Haynes, our seventh grade, one of our seventh grade social studies teachers, started this up in 2018 with students. It was a student-generated and teacher-included idea. When I first thought of this club and I met with him and Mr. Gabbercheck, I thought it was more like analyzing like games like Dungeons and Dragons, like how they work. So the idea is that they meet on a weekly basis. They talk about game design. They talk about like, you know, narratives, objectives. They talk about like, you know, narratives, objectives, resource management with a goal of developing a strong understanding of game mechanics. Like I said to the email today, I don't know half of these games, but these are games that there's a core group of students at HB that are interested in playing. And it seems like Mr. Haynes has filled that void. So proud to say that he will now be getting a stipend while working with the students while doing this every week.
Thank you. I really love this kind of, you know, unique outside the box offer for students. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments or questions in regard to community resources?
Ms. Freshy, if I could just make a statement real quick. We were starting up our parent speaker series again in January. You would have gotten your first flyer today. We usually share that with our educational committee, but we're going to be meeting later on in a year. And the presentation happens before our next board meeting. So it is going to be on January 26th. The topic is going to be stress management for parents in 2022. How to regain your balance. Dr. Smars is going to be the speaker. If you want to bring yourself up to speed on some of the other presentations we've had, those are on our health and wellness website. And that presentation will be seven o'clock at the VHS auditorium. If you do not feel comfortable coming out, it's going to be live streamed. So you could even watch it from home, so.
Thank you, Dr. Mariello. So that was January 26th. Did you say a time for that? 7:00 PM. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And continuing on with our agenda, at this point, we're going to open up to public comments on agenda action items to be approved tonight. If anybody has a comment on any of the resolutions in tonight's agenda, you could come to the podium. And it looks like there are no public comments. And state your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Bell. Live at 23 Hamilton Road. And I'm an elementary school parent. And I'd first like to express my support for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Initiative. Dr. Fenari, the presentation you put forth spelled a clear path forward in a productive way. This initiative is important to me because as our children move on to college and the workplace, they will be in a world that is more diverse than Verona. And being able to communicate comfortably with all kinds of people is an essential skill set for them in their life. Additionally, we've heard some really heartbreaking stories from Verona high schoolers in these meetings over the last few months. Our schools need to be a place where all students can feel like they belong. And now changing to completely different subject regarding your comments about the handling of COVID. As we all know, the numbers in Essex County are very high. And I've heard that some surrounding districts have enacted testing. And I wanted to know if there were any plans for the school to enact testing to keep our kids and teachers safe and to prevent the unnecessary spread of the virus to ensure that our schools can stay open. Thank you very much.
So we're going to take your comments, but this was for action items. Right now, the public comment was for resolutions on, but they're noted. So thank you. Are there any other, are there any comments on our action items on what we're voting on tonight for resolutions? Okay, if not, we'll move on to any new or old business. And I think something that I want to put on the table for new business is regarding the consent agenda format. I think that's something that we should, as a board, look at. I know it's come up as public comment a couple of times at the possibility of breaking it down into smaller chunks that coordinate better with our our committee groups. So it's just something I want to put out there. And then we could vet through the different committees and talk about that and circle back around. So I just want to get that on as new business. Does anybody else have anything?
Yes, I have one thing. So, you know, policy 0120 states that our board's responsible for evaluating our policy. So over the break, I did what, you know, any new board member would do. And I read the policy cover to cover. And I'm glad we have legal here so we could help me kind of understand this. So I'm not 100% convinced that we've been operating the conduct of this meeting or past meetings based on the prescribed order of business as stated in policy number 0164. This policy begins by stating that our board operates under Robert's Rules, newly revised. Robert's Rules defines the order of business as the sequence at which business is taken up during a meeting. The same policy goes on to state that the board president will work with the superintendent to create a board agenda, and the order of business shall be as follows. Our policy states that we begin with visitors and presentations, then public comments on the agenda items, then committee reports, then the super report, and then we enter discussion items. Then we vote on resolutions, then we approve the previous minutes. Then we enter public comment, and then finally, we adjourn. This is a logical flow that begins with the presentation and ends with adjournment. We also have another policy that reinforces this policy as 0171 states, it's the duty of the board president to enforce the board's policies relation to the order of business and the conduct at the meeting, the conduct of the meetings. So it looks to me that perhaps we may be a bit out of sorts in terms of how we sequence our meetings when we map it against our board policy. And maybe there's a good reason for it. Like if there is a mall, you know, I'd like to hear it. But last meeting, the board, the presentations first, but this meeting, we're being, it's being done as a second major item. The public comments on the agenda items is supposed to be the fourth major item. But both last meeting and this meeting, it's done, it's being done fourth and it's being done after the committee reports, when that should be flipped according to our policy sequence. Committee reports are set to become, are set to come before the superintendent's report. But it looks like we have that out of order as well. Discussion items should come next, but we do that fourth last meeting. And this meeting, we're going to be doing a fifth. After discussion, we're set to vote on resolutions and then approve the prior minutes. And we seem like we're combining those into one item, which seems sensible to me. And then fortunately, we end with public comments like we should. But I think there's a more, I guess, deeper problem with our policy because speaking of policies, a bunch of things that probably we need to address, and it would benefit us to look at these kind of sooner than later. Policy 210, 220, and 28, 24, 28.1 states that our mission statement is aligned to the New Jersey Common Core Content Standards. These standards are no longer the standards that are used in New Jersey. And in 2016, we switched to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Policy 0151, looks like it may be a holdover from days when the Board of Elections, the Board of Edge may have done elections in spring. It states that the reorg meeting shall take place two weeks after the school election. And that this, at this meeting, the BA squares and new board members. And we know that this hasn't taken place two weeks out of the election. So it might be something that just hasn't been updated in a while. And finally, we know that policy 9400, it states that we call DIFIS when we need to notify caseworkers. As we know, in 2012, DIFIS became known as DCPP. And this is a partner organization that schools use all the time. So I think we'd want to have that reflected, entitled properly in our board policy. So that I do ask that the people that are going to be voted to be in charge of the policy, you know, consider doing a thorough review to make sure we're up to date. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So those are great points. Some of those have been pointed out already and directed to Mr. Miller, and they're being revised. Policy revision is something that we all work on. So as we all see something that's out of date, we work with Strauss S.M. So they do send us automatic updates. Dr. Miller and the Education Committee do the policy. And you're going to be working on the Education Committee with Mrs. Drappi. So that's awesome. So you can speak to Mr. Miller and have all those policies and get those reviewed. That's awesome. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
First, I would just like to ask our tech, can you turn up the volume? I don't know if it's just me. I'm having a really hard time hearing what's coming through the microphones, both down there and up here. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for that. You know, I think it's interesting that when we're talking about consent agenda and the policy that sort of guides the order in which we do things. You know, I just find it strange that there's public comment on agenda items before committee reports, which sort of flesh out the agenda items, right? That are broken down inside the agenda by those committees essentially. So, I mean, I don't know if that's something that can be changed, like internally. I mean, that's obviously through policy. If that was something, I mean, I just feel like that would make more sense, right? So that the public could learn about the, through the committee reports, learn about, more about those resolutions and then be able to comment on that rather than commenting, then learning.
So philosophically, I agree with you. I think it's, you know, some districts will put in their policy that the chief school administrator or the board president will have the ability to kind of change the order of operations. Other districts will put, based on the time restraints that might possibly come up, those two people would have the power to change it. It might be very wise for us to look to do something like that because I do believe that, you know, the superintendent's going to, she might, he or she's going to want to organize their board meeting in a certain way based on whatever's going to be coming up at that particular meeting. But it just seems like right now, our policy doesn't allow for that when there's no, we have the power to change that, right? So I have to get something that we should look to do.
Yeah, I think there are points that are all well, well taken. And I believe, if I recall correctly, we did do an internal changing of the order to have the committee reports before the public comments on agenda items, just for that particular reason.
Right.
Like within maybe the last year.
Yep. No, we did. But I think to Mr. Walker's point.
Definitely be improved.
Yeah, I think just like allowing a little flexibility, like to craft the policy in a way that it just allows flexibility that the order of the agenda can be changed as needed, depending on the needs of the board. I mean, especially with a lot of what we have coming up regarding superintendent search and things like that. There may need to be some changes made. But again, that's something we can certainly discuss further in Ed Committee. Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on with our agenda. And we're to the point where we're going to do a roll call to vote on the resolutions. I need a motion to accept resolutions number one through 17.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Day. Second, second by Mrs. Crisco. And Mr. Cruz, can you please do a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Freshky?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
I need to abstain on 1, 4, 5, 14, 13, since I wasn't a board member for this.
Mr. Walker, repeat that again because I couldn't hear you. One, four. Oh, I'm sorry, this is masked. I need to abstain on 1, 4, and 5, and abstain on, I guess, 14 through 18. Like I told you yesterday in the email, I would have to because I'm not, was not a board member for those informations. Got it. So I have 1, 4, you're abstaining from 1, 4, 5, 14 through 18. Yes, please. Got it. Thank you. Okay. We have quorum. Thank you.
Okay. And we have agenda resolutions. I need a motion to accept agenda resolutions number one through four. Moved by Mrs. Crisco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Drappi. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Freshky?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Abstain from those as well, please.
Okay. And Mrs. Crisco?
Yes.
We have quorum motion passed. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And at this point, we can open up to public comments. And the comments can be on any topic. There's a three-minute limit per person. And if you could please state your name and address.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Fenari, members of the board. I'm Len Luciano, Essex County Commissioner. I have represented the West and North Essex communities for the last 10 and a half years, including Verona. I want to say, first of all, happy and healthy New Year to everyone. And I think we mean that when we say healthy, under the circumstances we have. I wanted to also thank you all personally for everything that you've had to endure. These are challenging times out there. And not one of our communities here in Essex County or in New Jersey are in the clear. You know, we're still being very careful and cautious, especially when it comes to students and young children. But most importantly, the reason why I'm here tonight is to congratulate both board members. One in particular, I'll start with Chris Walker. Chris and I go back to elementary school. He's a dear friend of mine. I'm really proud that he decided to run for elective office. I think he's highly qualified. I think he's going to make a great addition to this board. And I think that everyone here in this room tonight should take advantage of Mr. Walker's expertise and his background in education. Chris, I personally want to say best of luck in your term and very proud that you decided to run for elective office, especially being a school board member. Sometimes it's not the easiest of positions in a community. It's very difficult to make 51% of the people happy. I'll leave it at that. Moving along to Pam, I also want to congratulate you on your overwhelming victory. I think that the community has spoken. They like your leadership. They appreciate you here on this board, and they want to see you continue. I, too, wish you well in your term. And again, safe. And just, you know, do whatever you feel is with your heart. I know it's very, I want to say challenging times. Talk about challenging times, you know, leaving schools open because we care about children and their relationships with other students and character ed and learning with their school teachers, but we also care about their health and safety. You know, and we don't want to expose them, you know, to the virus that's been out there and some of the unfortunate news that we've seen with the spike in numbers of children testing positive. So Pam, I know you're going to do great. To the rest of the board members and to Dr. Fenari, who has a wealth of experience, too, not just here in Verona, but without, within other communities here in Essex County. I wish you the best under these challenging times. And know that Essex County government has done everything we can to, to provide mobile testing and testing sites. I think the closest one is probably over in West Orange at the old Kmart facility. And if there's anything I can do as an elected official to help you guys in any way, get what you need, whether that's help vaccinating, or I know a gentleman here got up earlier and spoke about testing in schools. You have my commitment that I will do everything I can, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you. And again, happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Happy New Year to you as well. Are there any more comments?
Hi, my name is Mike Dupree. I live at 47 Cypress Avenue. Just want to first say congratulations to Chris and Pam. You guys ran great campaigns and obviously won the adoration and support of the community. And it's a huge commit. There's no doubt about it. Everyone here knows that. Every one of the people sitting up here had to do that. You know, commit multiple years of your life, weeks of your life, every single time coming here. So that's not lost on a single person, this community, what you're bringing to the table, the commitment that you're bringing to the table, the time that you're investing. And so we really appreciate both of you for stepping up because not everybody can or not everybody is qualified to. So best of luck. I feel like we're in great hands with both of you. And, you know, you can already see that with, with the conversations this evening and the endorsements. So that's just what I wanted to start with. I don't have a ton to kind of say. I think there's one request from, from the committee updates regarding the, getting the Twitter feed up and running. Chris Barrows is not here tonight, but he has, in the past, volunteered to be of assistance to anybody. So he messaged me to ask me to let you guys know that if you need some help, he's very, very able to, able and willing to. Mr. Drappi, I know that you could probably make that connection. I would also just like to make a plea that if, in the future, updates are sent about, you know, changing the schedule of the school in a way that we, that is not insignificant like we had on Friday evening with coming in a half days, as much detail as humanly possible can be shared. I think if there's more knowledge and an oversharing of information about the why behind the decision-making, even down as specific to the nurses were not available to process the data to let us know what quarantines could look like or what staffing availability can look like. That stuff helps, I think, down to the detail of not just that a properly fitting mask can't be worn at lunch, but why and what the current state guidelines would make you have to do from a quarantine standpoint, based on close contacts. I personally think we should do everything. I personally think we should do everything in our power every single day and week to keep these kids in school all day long and to keep them in there, uh, and get back to normal as quickly as possible. But just the plea to, uh, overshare uh, a, a, as much as you're able to, because it will definitely help, uh, the community response be more informed, uh, versus, uh, you know, more subjective and speculative. Um, the last thing I have to, I, I wanted to just ask about, and this is just something I'd like an answer to at the end, is, is specific to elementary. There seem to be inconsistencies and looking ahead, and I'm being hopeful about what the coming weeks and months will look like. I, I'd like to have somebody hopefully address, uh, movement principles, uh, for specials. I got it. Um, I'll wrap up. Right now, middle schoolers, high schoolers are moving around constantly to classes. Uh, our elementary students are, are beholden to one, one room, uh, except for library, which has been successful. I'd love to hear more about the plan to get them not only in the cafeteria for lunch, but to move to art classes, music classes and other specials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. So our, our elementary kids are, are input all day in one room? Because do they eat in their classroom or they eat in the?
So, um, Mr. Dupree, what I will do is if you wouldn't mind emailing me your question, then I can respond directly to you. But Mr. Walker, just so that you're aware, um, every one of our schools has a different, um, space issue. And so are, they try to do things, similarly across the four buildings as much as possible. Square footage in some schools isn't allowing us to have certain special area subjects taught in those classrooms. So it's really, we navigate that based on square footage and class size. It's a different, that's a difference in some of the schools.
So I guess the why is basically the spacing in particular to each unique school.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Hi again.
We need your name and address for the record.
Siri put on a three minute timer. I'm Janelle Gutierrez and I'm at Eight Morning Side Road. I'm here today, um, because I wanted to support the DEI initiative and the district's goal to create an environment of belonging for all students. I'm so glad to hear tonight that an RFP is out and kindly remind that transparency is going to be key. As I was putting my thoughts together to speak tonight, I was reminded of the peaceful manifestations that occurred in the summer of twenty twenty-one, right here in our own town, organized by our youth in support of Black Lives Matter. At the town hall, our children shared stories and made it clear that they are experiencing discrimination and racism in the buildings that are meant to educate and counsel them. Former students came to share their experiences, their trauma in solidarity with the current student body. At the July twenty twenty-one board meeting, children shared their accounts of discrimination and they called on the board to begin to address issues related to race, diversity and representation. If we really wanted to make a change, we have to come together as a group. We undoubtedly will not agree on many of the issues. We must look at ourselves and outside of our comfort zone. I believe that we are flexible enough as a community to be challenged and courageous enough to create change. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, how are you? My name's Gina Signorelli. Um, this is my first time here, so I apologize if I'm not doing it correctly. Um, I'm just going to read. I'm late. I was at work, so I apologize again. I'm on, uh, Twenty-Six Valley View Road.
I, we, I'm sorry. Did we, we need your address as well.
Twenty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it. That, that's okay. My apologies.
That's okay. So, and, and again, I apologize if you guys reviewed any of the stuff. It's my first meeting, so I just wrote stuff. Again, I was late, so I'm just going to read what I have. As a healthcare professional, one of the top pediatric hospitals in New Jersey and a mother of an elementary student, I've seen firsthand as my child went from being a social butterfly to becoming isolated and having anxiety from school closings and remote learning. Many children are experiencing mental health issues as well as students falling behind. I've never witnessed more eating disorders and mental health concerns in the hospital since COVID. Given the low transmission rates in Verona Elementary Schools compared to the negative impact on our child's, our children's mental health, academic, social skills and their parents' ability to earn a living, the, the decision to shorten, to shorten the school day seemed ill advised on Friday at seven o'clock at night. The American Academy of Pediatrics recently declared a national state of emergency in children's mental health. Well, appreciate the mental health emails and homeschool connections. I think it's just putting a Band-Aid on things. At this point, with all the knowledge we have, our kids need to come first. Our schools are far from normal. And one of the first things to figure out obviously is lunch, um, and specials like Mike, uh, discussed. There's no research to suggest having lunch or changing, uh, different areas impacts our children and, or nor does it increase transmission rates. So I'd like to know what the plan is going forward, especially with meals. And I also question the sudden change now with this week, um, when Essex County has been in the red zone for weeks, what will change next week that will enable our children to return to full day sessions if we are still in the red zone at that time? I appreciate everything. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Real quick, I just want to say thank you for being a healthcare worker, especially now. Uh, it's your first board meeting. Thank you for coming. You did everything right and thank you for that important message.
George Kozicek, one hundred, Morningside Road. I don't want to keep on beating this DI, DEI thing to death, but, uh, with the forty-five lemons who were almost contracted until I found out that they were militant racist people. But to the people on the DEI committee, they were beautiful black people. So when you have the superintendent feels that they're not a good fit and the DEI committee feels they're a good fit, how are you going to work that together? So everybody feels it's a good fit. Right now, the current DEI committee refers to the community as them and us. They have split it up into two different groups. I don't feel that that's fair. It should be everybody together. But the them and us type of thing is not, is not working. So the current people on the BOE DEI committee who feel that forty-five lemons were perfect fit. And then the superintendent thinks that they're not a perfect fit. How, how do we, how do we address that? Secondly, we have, uh, superintendents are going to come, uh, and, uh, apply for the position. How do we, how do, how am I going to be able to get their names and check up on them? I'd like to know who these people are before you hire them. I'd like to know who the consultants are before you put anything in paper and almost hire them. Thank you.
For your comments. Are there any other comments?
Hi, I'm Joe Valone, Ten Windmere Road. I too am a healthcare worker, so, uh, this means a lot to me. Our children have been robbed of good memories, carefree days and a good education. An honest adult, any honest adult knows that the kids are not now or ever really were at risk for serious illness. And any adult who doesn't have empathy for them for this fact should be ashamed. While we are all unfortunately no longer free to do so many things now and are forced to abide by arbitrary rules that seem to be not in fact based by science, it's the zeal and cold-heartedness of many of these adults I'm here to address. If any person has legitimate fears regarding COVID, which now has basically turned into a, a mild to moderate cold, for the overwhelming majority, they should take any and all measures to see fit to protect themselves from catching this cold. But if a child's bass comes down, if they try to breathe in jib, if the nose isn't covered, they should never be penalized for it. Do we really believe that's going to spread this cold? Are adults' lives really at risk? No honest person could believe that. So if education is all about the kids, maybe it's time to stop being cowards and hypocrites. Maybe it's time for everyone to go off for huge power trips just for the sake of power. Maybe for the kids, we all show some bravery, character and selflessness. Because if not now, ask yourself, when?
Thank you.
Thank you as well, sir, for being a healthcare worker, especially now. I thank you for that message.
Do we have any more public comments?
One gentleman from before that he might have left or he came up at the wrong time, maybe. He left, okay.
Joe Hagerty, forty-four, Morningside Road. Uh, first of all, congratulations, Chris and Pam. Thank you for your service. Uh, I have, uh, I'm, I'm not a healthcare worker. I'm just a golf pro. I don't do a whole lot. So, um, but, uh, as a professional, one of my roles is to coach kids, both individually and in groups. I coach many kids right here in Verona, uh, in my twenty years living here with my wife and our three daughters. I have witnessed the accomplishment of a young student, thrill of a win and also disappointment and defeat. Sports, while being dismissed by some, is not important or critical in our children's overall development. The opportunity to work as a team, build relationships with others and deal with life's successes and failures, uh, not to mention the overall physical health of those who play. Uh, I could go on and on about why sports is a benefit to our kids, but their mental health, uh, mostly. Our oldest daughter runs high, uh, track at Verona High and our seventh grade twins have, uh, grown up through the rec departments, both softball and basketball programs. Uh, my, in my opinion, Verona does an incredible job at these programs. Uh, I am here tonight just to say that any cancellation of sports as we battle through this pandemic would be a total mistake and a decision, as it did the first time, do much more harm than good. Uh, my wife and I, and I'm sure many people in this room witnessed firsthand what this does to your children. We've, um, we've seen some, some mental health problems. And I will just say, I learned a long time ago, uh, from a great coach that I worked under, never impose your will on children. Uh, cancellation is not an option and is terribly short sighted. Uh, these kids have sacrificed enough. And if you're confronted by the possibility of canceling sports, I hope that you will fight the decision with passion. And our kids' best interest in mind, cancellation means we have failed our kids. And on another subject, I did have one quick question regarding DEI. And Dr. Fenari, thank you for applying to my emails. There are two books that you instituted staff and administrator book clubs. Is, is, when you say staff, do you mean the teachers in, in the, the town? Yep, okay. Um, that's my first question. And the two books, uh, How to Be an Anti-Racist and Uncovering the Hidden Prejudice. Uh, how, how did you guys decide on those books? Um, and what was the goal there? And if the teachers have been, in book clubs and, and, uh, using those books, I'm curious how we don't know that they're maybe not sharing some of the knowledge, uh, that comes from those books as well.
Sorry, uh, it's time. Three minutes is up.
How did you come up with the committees too? We would love to know that. Love to know some names. Thank you.
If I could, uh, to address your first point about the, I agree with you that it was devastating when we didn't have rec sports last year. Especially when Cobble had it and we didn't, that was even more of a punch in the gut. Uh, I know that Jim Cunningham sent a thing out to all coaches today saying uh, they're planning on moving forward with sports at the schools of the parents and spectators, even the coaches, which I am. I'm going to have to yell at coaches with a mask on, uh, but it's, yeah, I'm very optimistic that we're, we're going to hopefully keep forward with that because I think it's needed.
Hi, my name is Kelly Pasta. I live at forty-seven Derwent Ave. Pam is my neighbor. Congratulations Pam on your reelection. And Chris, congratulations as well. Um, this is hard for me to come up. I'm not very good at public speaking, so it's my first time also. Um, I get quite emotional when I think about remote learning because my older daughter suffered a lot and our family, you know, we took a toll emotionally when she was at home and, um, I want to make sure that doesn't happen again. I'm also a paraprofessional. I work in the Montclair School District and formerly I worked at the Roseville Park School District. And both school districts have made work kids eating inside safely. And I think that Verona could do this as well. By the use of partitions, I think that's been explored and I think that's a very safe option. If not, kids should eat in their classrooms. I've seen it done at both schools. Um, and then the teachers just hand out lysol wipes and it's a simple fix. I, it, I don't understand what the struggle is to find out how the kids can eat safely inside when I've already seen it done in two other school districts. That's it.
Do when it's too rainy to eat outside, like what do, what do the kids do in that situation?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
If it's raining outside, they can't eat outside or it's snowing or it's like two degrees out, like where do the, where would the kids eat then?
They do. They eat either in the cafeteria or their classrooms or in some of, some cases larger spaces.
That we have to, correct? They, they can eat inside, correct?
They can.
Right now, kids can eat inside? Perfect, all right.
Hi, I'm Nancy Zebra, Forty Birds Eggland. Happy New Year. Congratulations, Chris and Pam. I wanted to, um, just echo what some of the other community members have already spoken about. Um, I'm a psychologist. Today was my first day back at work. Um, I work with kids, um, specifically in education, but also as a clinical psychologist with kids of, who have, you know, emotional and, uh, difficulties of all kinds. My first day back today, I was, um, really just heartbroken to hear the stories of kids who are already struggling and just completely fall off with cliff. Being back with remote learning, um, and hybrid learning, um, just the past couple of days. And I think that their immediate emotional, uh, response was because there are, uh, they're traumatized from their memories of the not so distant past and their reactions were really just, uh, oh my God, here we go again. So to me, I was very, um, happy that my kids at least were half day. Um, so I appreciate all of your efforts to make that happen this week, even though, of course, I want them in full day every day. I was happy that my kids got to go to school at all. Um, so thank you for all of that. And I also want to say thank you, Dr. Fenari, for responding to my message. Um, and thank you to the nurses who responded Saturday, Sunday, uh, holiday break. I know everybody was working throughout the break, so I'm very grateful, um, to all of you. I also wanted to give a special acknowledgement to Mr. Cogdill, who last year, um, really took to heart everything that I had to say, all my concerns about the high school, really knocked it out of the ballpark in terms of getting the school reopened. Open campus lunch has been, you know, was tremendous last year, has been tremendous. I saw a night and day difference in my teenager who's been so happy. But came home with all his belongings packed up and said, oh my God, here we go again. And was really worried that school would not be reopened and now with remote learning because he was quarantined, but, um, you know, very concerned. I think the apprehension on everyone's mind of the, here we go again, you know, post-traumatic feeling that everyone is having is very concerning to me as a parent and as a mental health professional. Um, today alone, I saw depression, anxiety, a suicidal teenager who was just saying, I need to go back to school. All I need is to go back to school. And this kid has been home for two days, two days. So I really am just begging all of you to do everything possible to get these kids back in school all day, every day. Those are my questions. Um, I would like to echo Mike's comment about, um, transparency. Knowing the rationale for the half day schedule would be helpful and any, um, subsequent decisions that are made. If you need time to process the information of test results being submitted, totally get it. Um, if lunch is an issue, let's figure it out. It's been two years. We have to be able to figure out lunch. We have to. The high school, there's an open campus lunch. Let them be there for afternoon classes. Let them come to, for afternoon classes. The other schools, let's figure it out. It's been two years. There's got to be a way.
That was the three minutes. Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question based on that, Dr. Fenari? For our nurses that are working on hours that they traditionally would never have had to work like Saturday and Sunday emailing left and right, do we have any, uh, stipendary compensation that we, we are currently providing them for that extra level of service?
So we're under discussion with that and it's going to be brought to the personnel committee shortly. So we're under discussion with that, and it's going to be brought to the personnel committee shortly.
Congratulations, Pam and Chris. Happy New Year. My name is Gabrielle Zabrowski. What the hell am I? I can take my mask off. Okay. So I'm just up here just for my fifth grader. He, he asked, and I said, I don't think I'll be able to do it, but he asked that I ask the board and the super if he could not serve any more detentions for having his mask below his nose. He, I think, have served three. You know, I've contacted a teacher and I asked her that I think we can find some positive reinforcement ways to address the mask below his nose. He always has it on. I send it with him every day, but he asked that I give that message to the board. So here I am. That's all I have to say. So thanks.
Are there any more comments?
Good evening. My name is Councilman Mohammed Ramadan from the Borough of Heldon. Madam President, Superintendent, and fellow board members, I'd like to congratulate both newly elected board members, most importantly, to Mr. Chris Walker, who I served as a fellow board member. So I know what all of you guys go through each and every time, but also I served, he was also my former high school teacher. So it's definitely a big difference from that, from ten years ago till now. Most importantly, Verona's in good hands with Chris, and I know he'll do a phenomenal job on the board. And I want to wish all of you a healthy and happy New Year, and most importantly, always remain transparent and dedicated to the community that you serve. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Ramadan. When I was your teacher, I had a lot more hair. But Mr. Ramadan was the genius behind that great parade we did a couple of weeks ago. So thank you, Mr. Ramadan.
Are there any more comments? If not, we are going to close public comment session. And we're going to move on to adjourn the meeting. The next meeting, we have the special meeting on January twentieth with the search firm. And the next public meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, beginning with confidential session at five-thirty and the public session at seven PM here in the auditorium. I do want to wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year, and thank you for coming out this evening. Congratulations and welcome to the board, Mr. Walker, and welcome back, Mrs. Prisco. And we will adjourn the meeting. It is eight sixteen. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved, moved by Mrs. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Drappi. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, everybody. Good night, and we'll see you in two weeks.